We'll go ahead and call to order the Board of Supervisors Monthly Work Session for Wednesday, March 8, 2023. First item up is public input for any item not on the agenda today. If there is any comment for an item not on the agenda, and I'm not seeing any, so we'll move on to announcements with Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to members of the board, staff, and the public for joining us this afternoon for the March 8 work session of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the Zoom platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairwoman calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and you wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on. And prior to commencing this meeting, I have just a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using Zoom platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. And if a member of the public is acknowledged by the chair, please unmute your microphone for your question or comment. And finally, at this time, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Gracie Griffin? Ms. DeNeny?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a form.
Thank you. Okay, first, under unfinished business, we have a review of Pine Grove Road parking study, and that'll be presented by Ron Cyber. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess we're all live and going. So I'm going to share a presentation in PowerPoint to kind of walk through what we're going to talk about. I also have some drawings. They're PDF forms, so while I'm presenting, I'm going to have to share screen and then jump out and then reshare a different window to walk through this. So let me get started by sharing the right screen, I hope. Okay, here we go. So for today, for the work session, this is interesting. Is there a way I can get rid of that? Yeah, I can. Okay. I can't. It's blocking my own screen on here. We'll work with it. All right. So for today, things we want to do, I thought we would start with revisiting the mobility study recommendations. That's kind of where this all started. Take a look at what our current parking ordinance restrictions are. This will be brief. Talk a little bit about the guidelines from the state with respect to establishing parking restrictions. Take a look at some options for that, which we put onto drawings, and then kind of discuss what we want to do to move forward with perhaps even marking parking spaces as well. So again, going back, this should look familiar to some people. I think everybody was involved in one way or another when the Pine Grove Mills Mobility Study was completed. We used McCormick Taylor as our consultant to walk us through that process, and there was extensive public input leading through a number of different projects to be considered. This slide I stole from that presentation that was given to the Board of Supervisors, and it highlights recommendation number 11, which was the parking study analysis and recommendations. You can see on this graphic that the parking study was predominantly along Pine Grove Road, but also proceeded up the hill, up Water Street, and just a little bit on Nixon Road. We expanded that a bit to be a little more comprehensive. We went further on Nixon Road based upon some of the feedback and comments. This, the area of concern would have been caught here, but we looked at all of Pine Grove Road within the study area, and we also, I'm sorry, Nixon Road within the study area, and then we also looked at Pine Grove Road West going out beyond even in front of the school and Deepwood Drive. The mobility study had a lot of information that was garnered and gathered. We reviewed all that information. It took a lot of public input into consideration, looked at the opportunities for parking, some issues and potential problems with parking. There were two pages in the mobility study, and I'm not going to read through all of these, that went through all the data collection, even looked at parking utilization, and came up with some basic conclusions. And then moving forward from that, further in the study, there was a separate sheet just dedicated to recommendations coming out of it, and letter G was all the recommendations with respect to the parking improvements. And you can see here in the middle of the page, I don't expect you to see all of those, so I went ahead and kind of blew those up, so perhaps they're a little more visible. So the first, I'm just going to walk through these real quick to let you know where we are with each of these eight specific recommendations that came out of the mobility study. The first one deals with integrating parking into any improvements that might occur at the Pine Grove Road, Nixon Road, Water Street intersection. That's a separate project to be moved forward in advance, but that is just kind of a comment that covers that. Whenever that's done, do our best to try to integrate any parking or correct parking as needed based upon improvements at the intersection. Two through eight are really what we looked at for this one. So the next one was to look at site distance along Pine Grove Road west of Water Street based upon the 25 mile per hour speed limit, possibly being able to expand zones and pick up some more parking. We looked at the whole stretch of Pine Grove Road, not just on the west side of Water Street. We looked at the east side of Water Street also. Mark the existing parking spaces along Pine Grove Road, and you'll see that on our plan, we have a couple options for you there, but we do show how we could mark those parking spaces. The next one was to standardize the parking signage formats, messaging, so there's a consistent message throughout the town. Clearly, what's out there is not clear. It is not really consistent throughout. So whatever option we choose moving forward, a complete re-signing of all the parking restrictions would be done. Coordinate the ordinance in the field postings. You'll see that as well. So there's some inconsistencies there, so we did look at that. Update the parking orders to remove the Sunday parking on the south side of Pine Grove Road. We looked at that. We'll talk about that as well. Increase the intervals of, or increase the density, so there's shorter intervals of parking restrictions on Pine Grove Road for the signing. That obviously would be done as part of the posting, and then consider adding parking signs along the east side of Water Street. There are strict parking within the site triangles, and we will talk about that as well when we get to our diagrams. This, I just pulled again from the mobility study, just kind of wrapping that up. This was a tabulation of all the projects, if you recall, where they had the tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three, as to the priority of the projects. And so again, project number 11 in the middle row, these are not in order because they're ranked by tier on the right side. So all this stuff for project 11 is what we're talking about, and that was a tier one project that the board had selected at that time to advance and move forward. And so part of this whole plan is to complete this study here in the spring, get feedback from the Board of Supervisors, and be ready to implement it this year. Just a real quick then, look at what the current parking ordinance restrictions are. We'll walk through each of these bullets here shortly, briefly. So parking prohibited at all times, so there are places where you're not allowed to park at any time along Pine Grove Road, east and west, but there are no restrictions anywhere currently ordained along Water Street or Nixon Road. There are some places where there's signs posted, but there's no ordinance that ordains them to make them enforceable. We also have some places where parking is prohibited at certain locations, days and hours, and there's a zone on, that goes from basically the Deepwood Drive to 1.938 feet west of Rosemont Drive along the south side of Pine Grove Road, which says you can't park there at all except Sundays from 8:00 to noon. There's an ordinance that says that, but there's no signs to that effect on the street. This is the one that the mobility study recommends to remove, and we will show you that on the plans. There's some other restrictions in place. There's a 30-minute parking along east Pine Grove Road. It's kind of in front of the businesses where the hair salon and the Stitch Your Art Out is. So it's a 30-minute parking that's posted, but there's no ordinance to that effect. There's also a loading zone on Water Street posted, but there's no ordinance for it. And then there's no parking along Water Street also posted, but no ordinance to that effect either. So all of these things that we found kind of support the inconsistencies that the consultant found as well that would be cleaned up as part of the process. So anything that we study will then go through ordination, and then we get implemented in the field. So just a real quick talk at the guidance that we use for establishing or considering parking restrictions. So it's out of the Pennsylvania Code Title 67, Pub 212, or Chapter 212. Here's my little beat-up copy of it that I refer to. And there's a section in there, Part 114, talks about the stopping, standing, and parking restrictions. And the key point that I wanted to make here is that in this, there's a word that says "may," and then it lists out nine different scenarios or conditions to be evaluated as to when parking may be restricted. It's not mandatory. If you come across these scenarios, you don't have to restrict the parking, but you may restrict the parking. So that's just an important thing to recognize, that the local governing body has some latitude if parking is justified, whether or not to post it, if that makes sense. Any questions on that? That's just kind of an important point as we move forward, because we came up with options for the board to consider for parking, and I'll discuss those here shortly. Okay, moving along then. That's the next thing we're going to do. We're going to take a look at the actual PDFs for the parking. The area that has the most opportunity for parking is Pine Grove Road, so I included this graphic from the mobility study. It just kind of depicts the existing cross-section that we have on Pine Grove Road. We have one lane in each direction, and then we have a space along the north side that's available for parking. The double yellow lines being offset, not in the middle of the road, but almost at the third point, so we have adequate width for two travel lanes and a parking lane. As I mentioned before, with both of the options we're going to talk about, one of the things is just updating the signing, so there is a consistent message throughout the town. Update the ordinance so it's consistent with what the desired parking option is. And then the other thing that we're looking at, we want to talk about, that would be common to both, would be taking a look at that 30-minute time restriction in front of those businesses to consider having a time restriction there, but perhaps something longer than 30 minutes, particularly for a hair salon. At least my wife tells me it takes longer than 30 minutes to get your hair done, especially if you're getting a cut and a color. So maybe something more like two hours would be more appropriate in that zone there. So now I'm going to have to jump out of my share and jump back into another window, so you bear with me a second. See how this comes in. Good. Okay, I am going to play with this a little bit. We'll be zooming in and out and looking around, but we have a nine-page drawing set that shows all of the Pine Grove area that we studied. And so I got to remember to do this with my pointer, so folks online can see it. This is Pine Grove Road. You can probably recognize from the aerial, this is the Ferguson Elementary School. So we're starting at the west end of town, and as we go across the sheet from left to right, we're continuing from west to east. Then we jump down here and continue again from west to east until we get up here to Water Street. So this first sheet is basically everything on west Pine Grove Road, west of Water Street. So there's a legend here, hard to read, so I'll walk you through it. The black line, solid black line that you see along the north side of the road here in front of the elementary school, that's where it's currently posted, no parking. The red line that you see underneath that is where we affirm that from our study and recommend that that will continue to be is no parking. On the south side of the road here, you see this line. It's a solid line with two dashes, and if you can't see, I can zoom in a little bit. That's the zone where it's restricted, no parking, except 8:00 a.m. to noon on Sundays. And in accordance with this mobility study, as well as our review of the guidelines in the state, this is a zone that we would recommend be posted, no parking. There's not adequate width between the curb and the double yellow lines to park a car and still pass without going into the opposing lane. Here you'll see, we get into a section just east of Sports Road where there's currently, the green is where it's currently permissible for parking, and what we've done is we've drawn in here in this magenta color where we could stripe off individual parking stalls within that section. What you'll also see here is these black triangle lines. Well, what the heck are they, Ron? Those are the site distance lines. So a person sitting on Sports Road that wanted to look left and right before they pulled out onto the roadway, those are the sight lines that they would need based upon the posted 25 mile per hour posting. So you can see here at Sports Road, we had an intersection to check, and then also down here at Kirk Street, we had another intersection to look for corner sight distance. And so what we did, we were able to confirm that essentially in this area, what is posted as permissive parking in green, we affirm that. That seems appropriate, and if we look at the number of spaces that we could stripe in there in this section, you could accommodate about eight vehicles. Continue moving to the east from Kirk Street down to Water Street. Again, we have the site triangle at the corner. We also looked at turning movements for vehicles exiting Water Street, and we looked at a combination vehicle, a truck with a trailer, as well as a school bus, to see what those maneuvers would look like. Based upon that, it looks like where right now this black line says no parking up to here, we could extend that and allow parking for two more spaces in this direction, and then based on the sight line at Kirk Street, we could extend the zone slightly to the west and pick up one space there. So in this section, you could go from available parking of seven vehicles to 10. We'll talk more about the options for markings. I just have them drawn in there as such now, so it's very easy to see where the parking spaces are. Now, the other thing I want to talk about this, on this plan, you'll see it's noted Option 1. So we looked at two options for parking based upon the guidance that it's optional for the local agency to consider whether we restrict parking or not. One was very aggressive, where we looked at every access point along the roadway and said, if we want to honor the sight lines for every access point, here's where you can park and where you can't park. The other one, we were a little more liberal, and we said, we're just going to look at any right-of-way, be it public or private, but not every private person's driveway, but we'll also consider any place where we've had a complaint in the past, where people couldn't see to get out of their driveway, where we did post it. We would maintain those postings based upon the prior complaint, but look to see if we can adjust the zones based upon the speed. So for this section that's west of Water Street, between Option 1 and Option 2, there's really no difference because we have no private driveway accesses. All the accesses west of Water Street are either from a public street or from a private street. So the next sheet in here is Option 2. So you can see down here it says Option 2, but again, all of the graphics on here, everything's the same. Nothing changes in this section for those two different options. Continuing along, going to the east, now we're in the section from, this is the post office. Nixon Road is just off the page to the left, and again, continuing to the east, and then jumping down below, and continuing further down, getting down to about the location where those commercial businesses are that I mentioned earlier, the Stitch Your Art Out and the hairdresser. So this for Option 1, and this is where things start to change a little bit. For Option 1, you can see we have a lot of site triangles drawn in here for all these private driveways. As a result of that, if we would try to respect all of those private driveways, where we have now the green that you could park, to respect that sight line, we would say, no, you wouldn't have any parking in there at all, basically. That would eliminate almost all of the parking. There would be one space in this vicinity here, just to the west of Thrust Street. It would be the only place that you could park. So this is a pretty aggressive, pretty conservative. You'll see on the south side, we still have that line style with the permissive parking on Sundays from 8:00 to noon, and that continues and ends again in this vicinity of where the commercial businesses are. And again, that entire distance, we're recommending on that side that that would be no parking at all times. So let me show you Option 2 for this section of the street. Here now, we're looking at these private driveways with these residences, but we're not, I'm sorry, we're not considering sight lines from those driveways. So that opens it up. We've never had complaints from these people. We did have a complaint from this location here, maybe two years ago now. I'd have to go back and look at the exact date. I don't recall it. There was a truck and trailer parking in this vicinity that was there for a long term, that they had a difficulty seeing past them with vehicles coming. So that zone is still left in there because we had that prior complaint. So with this one, you'll see there's a number of places where parking is currently available, and again, we've gone in and drawn in if we marked it. And again, the number of spaces doesn't change a lot, because even here where this zone was just a little bit longer than what you could park two cars in, there wouldn't have been enough room to park three cars between the driveways. There just wasn't enough space. So the number of available on-street parking spaces doesn't really change a lot through this section, basically everything to the east of Water Street. Continue then going to the east. Here again, starting in the vicinity where those commercial businesses are, this option again looks at honoring the sight distance from all the driveways. You can see again, all the site triangles there, the green where it's allowed now, and the red where we could post it to prohibit that parking. There's a short section here right next to Rosemont Drive that currently is not restricted for parking, but we would propose that to be parking because it doesn't have adequate width. You can see the bump in the curb here. We don't have the required width here to allow cars to park and the vehicle to pass them without crossing the double yellow line. And as we continue to the east of Rosemont Drive, even going to the limits of our study request, basically to Meckley Road, again, you can see there's an existing parking restriction here that was installed for Rosemont Drive. There was a lot of parking along the shoulder of the road, and we had a complaint about sight distance, so this was posted and ordained in this location for parking restriction. When we looked at the 25 mile an hour posting, here is your actual sight line that you need for 25, but we also know that when cars are coming into that zone, they really aren't down to 25 yet by the time they get to Rosemont. So I put a note here. I don't know that we need to keep it the full distance that it is. I don't know that I want to take it down to a 25 mile an hour posting, so we'd like to go out and do an 85th percent of speed, see what the speeds actually are in the field with cars on this approach coming in, and then adjust that distance accordingly. So it'll probably be somewhere between where it is now and what it could be at 25 miles per hour. And that's about it for that one. If we go to Option 2 for this last section of east Pine Grove Road, again, you'll see all of those locations where we had parking permitted. We've drawn in the numbers spaces that we can get. I'll just point out too, you might see some of these spaces are a little different in size. Our minimum parking stall size is eight by 24, but if you're at the beginning or the end of a bay, we can take that down to eight by 20, because these people have the driveway area to maneuver in and out of those end spaces. So you'll see some are smaller and some are bigger, and we just did that to try to maximize the number of marked spaces that could be on the street. Yeah, that's all for that one. Going on then, a couple more sheets to look at. So we're going to go up Water Street next, and on Water Street, interestingly enough, there's, this is the signs that are along the east, sorry, the west side of Water Street going south or going up the mountain. There are signs here to post this as no parking, but this was the section that there was no ordinance adopted for. There's also a sign here that we've got shown, which is a loading zone. It's just one sign, loading zone. So from looking at this street though, considering the width of the street and the space between the white line and the edge of the pavement, the edge of the shoulder, there's really not adequate space to park a car without, again, a vehicle going into the opposing lane. So for this stretch of Water Street, we'd be recommending there be no parking anytime on both sides of the road. Similarly, on Nixon Road, we have, it's a bit longer on South Nixon Road. Here we are starting at Pine Grove Road and heading towards the north. There is a small space here. There's a bump out in the curb, and you see cars parked there from time to time. That's legitimate space for parking. It's available now, and you could put two small parking spaces in there. The rest of the length of Nixon Road really does not have adequate width to allow a car to park without them crossing over the W O line into opposing traffic, and we continued that. We went even beyond where the shared use path crossing is and up past Sunday Drive. Here, I just really wanted to make sure we had the required sight lines. So you'll see that parking restriction even extending out beyond the Westfield subdivision in the vicinity of where Cecil Urban Park is. And it's very possible when Cecil Urban Park is developed, depending upon the usage of the park, we may need to extend those parking restrictions so we don't have people parking alongside the road to go in and use the park. But there should be ample and adequate parking provided on-site for those uses. So that's a walkthrough of all the different locations that we've considered. Let me just jump back to the PowerPoint quick again to kind of summarize where we are and where we want to go to, and then we can come back to these diagrams if you have, or have questions about them. So just a couple more slides here. Yep, this side one. So just a couple more slides here. So marking spaces, there's options for marking the spaces. The first bullet there says no markings, just signs. That's legal. You can enforce that. That's basically the same strategy that's being employed on the street right now. One of the recommendations from the study though was to mark the parking spaces. Well, there's options for that. There's lots of different ways that that can be done. The first one is something I've never seen before, but is in the MUTCD. It's a plus symbol that goes in at the corner of the parking stall. And I put a little graphic of that on the slide there, because honestly, I've never seen this done before. But it is something that is permissible. It minimizes the amount of paint, but it still gives guidance for where you're supposed to park your vehicle. And the little tab sticking out into the travel lane will help the driver identify where the beginning and the end of the stall is. Kind of a unique little marking. So it's also probably the least expensive of all the markings that would have to be done. I put the cost in here for each of these, and that would be the cost to paint them one time. And that's all of them. That's not per marking. That's the whole area along Pine Grove Road. So this one with the plus symbol is about $75, plus or minus. We don't have our bids for painting yet this year. If you did the parallel lines at the ends of the stalls, this would be consistent with what we have in Turnberry along Old Gitzberg Road, where we just have an eight-foot line perpendicular from the curb at the spacing. Those, that'd be about $125. If you added a small T to the end of that, maybe up to 200. If you did the full box out for the parking stall, similar to the way we had it drawn on the graphic, then you're looking at about $340 for the whole corridor to put them in that direction. The other thing I do need to point out, if we do marked parking spaces, we are required by PROAG, Americans with Disabilities for Public Rights of Way, to identify one handicap parking space for every 25. There's currently one out there on West Pine Grove Road, west of Water Street. East of Pine Grove Road, we would have to find two other locations to sign and mark that for handicap parking spaces. If you don't mark the parking spaces, you're not required to have reserved parking. The other thing that was talked about was consider curb paintings to supplement the parking restrictions. So this would be in places where you're not allowed to park. Where you would be allowed to park, there would be no paint, just the markings on the road. Other locations, we would have red. There is a fire hydrant out there where we can't park in front of us. That would be red. All other places would be yellow. And we can do blue in the handicap parking spaces on the curb to help emphasize that they are handicap parking. The last thing I want to talk about on the marking options, if the board decides they do want to mark them, is that we wouldn't be doing any markings until the fall of 2023. We wouldn't do any in the spring of this year. And that's because I found out a couple weeks ago that Pendott is resurfacing Pine Grove Road through Pine Grove Mills, actually starting on the west end and coming the whole way up here to Whitehall Road, skipping the portions that were redone with the Shingle Town intersection. So it wouldn't make sense for us to mark them and then come in and mill them off right after that. So we would wait till it's all resurfaced, repainted, pre-stripped, and then we would come in and do our markings. Okay, so that's the end of what I have to present. So we're kind of at the questions and discussion portion. I'd like to take questions first, so we can clarify anything that people didn't understand the presentation, and then talk about the two different parking option plans where we give every homeowner lots of sight distance, but we have very, very little parking on the street. Oh, the last thing I should let you know, the number of parking spaces with the different options. If we go with option one, where we restrict parking where the private driveways are, we get about 21 parking spaces. 21.
It ends up being 21?
21, yep. If we go with option two, where we keep it consistent with what we have now and mark the parking spaces, we're about 64. You may recall, if you had a real sharp memory from the mobility study, the number estimated was 90. We didn't get 90 when we went through. And I don't know if they really got granular enough to consider where all the driveways were and where you could and couldn't park. I think they may have just looked at in this area, you can park so many based upon the length. So looking at it specifically, we got 64 instead of the 90 that was in the study. When the intersection is reconfigured, there's a possibility we could pick up a couple or three spaces there. Not a lot, but that's the order of magnitude. We're looking at about three times the number of available parking. And really, the west side of Water Street doesn't change. They're pretty consistent. It's mostly on the east side of Water Street. And I think there were about 18 parking spaces on the west side. Don't quote me on that. I could go back and look at it. So it's really, the big impact is on the east side of Water Street. You're really, really hitting the available parking, excuse me, for residents and businesses. So there, that's that. So questions from the board? I'm not going to hold this slide here. I think you kind of know what we want to do. We just want to talk questions, discussion about the parking options, about the marking options, and then we can talk about next steps. So I think to help with conversation, answer questions, maybe there won't be any, but if there are, I'm going to go back to the drawings so we can answer any specific questions that the board or the public may have.
So let me, I'll ask a clarifying question. So the 21 spaces in option one, you're only talking about the east?
That would be for the entire length of Pine Grove Road and even the two on Nixon Road. That's all included in that 21.
Okay, so that was a total?
That's everything. That's everything that would be available. That's correct. But again, most of those are in this section that you see displayed right now. That's where most of the available parking would be. There were a couple scattered down on the east side, and of course, there's the two on Nixon Road as well.
Okay, so there's only, I'm counting maybe seven?
Well, let me get a look here. I'll just zoom in on my notes. There are eight spaces there, and there are 10 here. So here's 18 spaces.
So that, okay, that was the 18.
So that's 18 of the 21 spaces are right here. And then, well, here's the other two on Nixon Road. Now we're up to 20. So apparently, there's only one other space, and that sounds about right, actually, one other space further to the east that would be available if we, and that would be this one right here. Everywhere else, as you go down through here, because of the density of driveways or private streets or a fire hydrant, there's just no space that you could put a car on the street without affecting the sight line for a private driveway. Now, I'll say this too. In the past, like currently, you can park out there. There's nothing that says you can't. And we've had very little complaints. And any place we've had a complaint, we've investigated it, and the board has gone ahead and ordained a parking restriction. And this is the big May provision. You're not required to post for these sight distance concerns, but you can if you want to.
Before I look, I don't see any hands quite yet, so can we just maybe hit on a couple of things that seem really easy? So Water Street, it looks like there is no parking. There should be no parking, and there just needs to be a no parking ordinance, was the recommendation there?
Yeah, as we looked at that, there's places now that it's posted no parking, and there's other places that it's not posted no parking. We don't see people parking there. I don't think it's advisable to park there, because we don't have enough space off of the travel lane in order for cars to park. So yeah, that's basically everything on Water Street from Pine Grove Road up to Chestnut Street.
Okay, and then on Nixon, the recommendation was maintain the two existing parking spots. And is there an ordinance on that yet restricting?
There's nothing on Nixon Road.
No, okay, nothing on Nixon.
Currently, it's ordained to restrict parking. There is one sign out here that says no parking here at a corner. And so that's a good, that's what we want, that 30 feet back from the intersection. So that meets the guidelines, and so we can still have two parking spaces in here. But again, there would still have to be ordinances based upon the direction the board would give us. We would get the draft ordinances, update the plans to be consistent with what the board desires, and have that available for consideration at public hearing.
Okay, so those two sections seem to be very clear and unchanging from what they are. And then I guess just a general question on parking studies. I was trying to think of all the ones that have occurred since I've...
Yeah, so we had one not long ago on North Buck Street. Yeah, we did a parking study there based upon concerns from residents, and the board enacted some parking restrictions in those locations, in that location.
And the board enacted the parking restrictions that were recommended from the study. So, okay, so that's, I just want to know, so we're following a consistent pattern. Okay, and so let me look. I can't really see on the screen if there's a hand up. It's a little far to the left, so if anyone had any comments, Laura or Patty can just say them.
I'm not sure if we're asking questions or if we've moved on to discussion. I have no questions.
Okay, yeah, I think we were just on clarifying questions at this point, knocking out those couple of easy sections, so...
I do want to thank staff. This has just exceeded any of my expectations of excellence, which are already really high with all of you, but like, this is really well done, and I just really wanted to take a minute to say how much I appreciate this on behalf of the village.
So on your slide for the next step, so you had...
Yeah. Yeah, so we just wanted to make sure there were no questions about the presentation or how we did it. The next one will be just discussion about the two options that we presented, one very conservative, one very liberal. You know, do we want to prohibit parking at all those private driveways or keep it more consistent with what's out there right now?
Okay, well, let's start with comments on that or questions.
And again, that takes you from basically east of Nixon Road and Water Street. You only have one on-street parking space.
Okay, Laura, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thanks. Because of the very dire need for parking in the village and also in companion with staff and the board's concerns when they're brought to us about, you know, difficult sight, I would go with the less conservative approach for both sides of the town. Again, it's because we really need the parking, and if it turns out that in one or two small areas, allowing the parking as we are in a less conservative way, if it turns out there's a small problem, we could address that by then going back and signing that particular thing. And really, I'm feeling comfortable with doing that because staff already took in all of that data from the past complaints and integrated it, so I'm not worried about being less conservative. I did want to make one comment about something that I think is really important for us as a board to always keep in mind, is that our traffic engineer is using a metric of not crossing the yellow double line as being what is good or bad about allowing parking. And so in this area where we desperately need parking for many businesses in conjunction with the small area plan, we are using that metric to constrain where we allow parking. So I want to encourage the board to keep that in our mind when we see other places in the township where parking is forcing cars across the double yellow line and that we apply our policies uniformly. So if we're using that metric here, which I approve and I agree, and I think that's the safe and appropriate metric, we need to use it everywhere across the township as a board. So keep that in mind for a future discussion, which I hope makes it onto the agenda. So least conservative because of our care and our ability to address any issues that may crop up. Is there another question, or is it just conservative or least conservative right now?
I think with respect to the two parking options, that's really what we're coming down to. Do we want to consider those private driveways? Or are we going to say, hey, you know what? We haven't had complaints. We haven't had issues. We're going to continue. We're going to actually mark and identify places where people are allowed to park on the street, even near these private driveways. Now, if we do get complaints and we have to post it, then we just, we'd end up eradicating and changing those pavement markings if we choose even to put the pavement markings down as the mobility study recommended.
If you wanted an answer on pavement markings right now, I would say that I would go for, not the plus sign, because that's going to cost us money in the long run of educating people on a new idea. Also, like, the cost for the whole project is so low in terms of the markings. I'm not really worried about the savings there. And also, the other criteria of why we even wanted these spaces other than to eliminate everybody's stress and confusion and headache is because it's going to give an illusion to the eye of the driver that's going 50 miles an hour through our village and make them think that that street is more constrained. So I would go with the full box painting or the line, but I think full box is really what's going to give you that edge, that white edge that makes you think, oh, that's how narrow my cartway is. So in terms of the painting, I would go with probably the full box. Thanks.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you. Now, did I unmute myself? I did, okay. Well, now I'm really curious about what Laura just said about parking and using the double yellow line consistently. So where, Laura, are you thinking that we don't do that? I guess I'm just concerned because this is a state road through Pine Grove Mills, so I don't know where else in the township you're referring to.
There's an issue in West Ferguson that's been unaddressed by the board that we've had complaints about. There is a double yellow line, the parking there does, the unpermitted or whatever, but yet not illegal. I don't know. It's uncanny valley. I don't understand it. But it does definitely force people over the yellow line every single time they use it. So I did try to make an agenda item for that. I'm not sure where it is in our consent process, but I'm going to ask the chair, yeah, about a little refresh on how that's working these days. But hopefully, we'll see that on our agenda. Thanks.
Okay, well, and I was just wondering if this is more of a question than for Ron. Thank you for clarifying where that was, Laura. Is there a difference because this is a state road as opposed to being maybe a rural road? Something like that?
That would be a legitimate factor to consider whether you want to post a parking restriction or not. Again, that's one of the nine factors that we look at, and all of those are May. So if you don't have adequate width, it's up to the local agency still if you want to restrict parking or not. And whether the amount of traffic on a road could be something that you would consider to say, yes, we're going to post it in this situation, but no, we're not going to post it in another situation. So the amount of traffic could be a reason for consideration as to whether or not to
Thanks, Jeremy.
If we went with the parking, would there be a restriction of how long you could park across the entire stretch, or?
That's a great conversation point. Right now, the only place that has a time limitation that we're looking at is that area in front of those businesses where Stitchy Art Out and the hair salon is. It's already posted with 30-minute, and we think it makes sense to go two-hour. But there could be other limitations that the board could put on that corridor for parking, so you don't get long-term parking where people are just parking out there that don't even live there. Or you could post it like during the day, a certain time restriction, but allow overnight parking without restriction. So there's a number of different strategies that could be employed. I don't know that you need to implement those right now. You might want to be a little more responsive to how things go and what complaints might be. There are some cars that I see there through the day, but we definitely see more cars there at night. So there are some people, it appears they park on the street during the day, they go to work. They're gone, they come back in the evening. But there still are some cars in front of homes that are there pretty much all the time, so they could be, you know, work-at-home or stay-at-home moms or whatever, that, you know, a time restriction for that could be a hardship for the resident.
Yeah, I want to stay cognizant of that.
Thanks. Did you, oh, I see Laura's hand again. Before I go to Laura... Oh, okay, I see that now. Are you getting adequate feedback so far?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Once we're done with our conversation, I'll just get a kind of an affirmation consensus. I don't know if it has to be a motion, but say, Ron does this, and so we know how to proceed to implement.
I'll just say for now, my first comment would be, because this road is just so heavily trafficked, I mean, this is a busy, busy road. It's a low speed limit that's rarely adhered to, lots of pedestrians on a very narrow sidewalk. So I think having that full box marking of those parking spots, whichever way we go, I think makes a lot of sense, because that's, you know, it's been shown that having on-street parking... because that's, you know, it's been shown that having on-street parking helps reduce speed, and so when there aren't cars there, and I think maybe we could consider the three-hour too, because we know that people, a three-hour parking limit, because we know people are at restaurants and, you know, whatever else is happening there, so that might be something to consider. I don't know who was first. I see Laura's hand still up, so go to Laura.
I just, I guess I have a couple of questions about some of these more detailed things. I, and I also wanted to, maybe then, if it's just a may and not a shall, I'm big on consistency, and like, I guess I wonder, why would we at one time think it was safe for Sunday morning parking on the one side of the street? Clearly, that was to benefit the churches, and like, I love the churches and everything, love them, love them, but like, that's a bit kind of specific to them. But we were comfortable with allowing that at that time, so I guess now I'm rethinking some things based on the, hey, that yellow line, you know, it's just a may, and we have a huge need for parking, and we allowed it Sunday mornings along that side of the road. And any of, anybody that's a hiker, like, you can't get to the access points in Pine Grove Mills to the forest unless you, like, I have to park in the church parking lot, pretty much. That's like the closest parking. But like, if there were parking allowed between the deep woods, that would be so awesome. And so, I guess I'm now questioning this assumption that we don't let people to cross the yellow line, or that the yellow line has to remain where it is, making one side of the road smaller, and the, you know, like, maybe we want to have that parking on Sunday not only remaining, but allowed on other times. And then, I guess, then my other thought about this time limitation is, again, not everybody's parking there to like, go to a business. Some people are, but I guess I want to be really careful about these weird, like, you can only park for two hours, three hours, one hour, da-da-da-da-da, unless there's a super-specific reason for it, that like, there's maybe 10 businesses in a row, and they all share five spots, and you really have to be careful about it, because otherwise, all we're doing is increasing enforcement and confusion. So, and also, like, then barring people from using this valuable parking in a way that's beneficial. So again, I'll go back to the hiker. Ain't no way my old butt is making it up to the top of the mountain and then back down again at a leisurely pace in three hours. Like, I can do three hours, but like, I'm not going to do two, and I'd maybe perform four up on the mountain. So now I've got to butt, bust my butt to get back down the mountain to not get a ticket when we've just done this, and we're trying to participate with DCNR, and not have them do that Chestnut Street parking lot, and then have more parking. So like, just wondering, why are we being so restrictive now on that side, as opposed to allowing, if it's just a may, and there's other places in the township that we allow it, and we actually want people to slow down? So I agree, Lisa, there's a high volume of traffic, but my mind says, everything that I've ever read about traffic control says, put obstacles up, don't let them fly through, don't make a wide cartway, do allow parking, do allow those corridors to come out and make people slow down to watch for them. So I guess I'll just rethink that other side, and wonder if staff has anything that they can maybe add to why the decision fell, since there's just may's and not shall's, and we need parking so bad, and it was allowed, why are we falling toward the more restrictive in that portion as opposed to least? Thanks.
Back to me?
Yeah.
So, in this location, given the volume and the type of traffic that we have going on here, we didn't look at from a capacity analysis, I mean, we could do that as well to see what it might be, although we'd have to somehow forecast parking, and that would be difficult to do too, as to how many people would still park on the street if we allowed it, if we didn't restrict it. Just based upon the lane widths and the classification of the road, and the mix of traffic that we have, is why we went with the recommendation to no parking on the one side of the street. The other thing that plays into it a little bit, I know people say there's a big demand for parking, but if you go out there right now and you look at it, there's a very low utilization of the available parking that's out there. There's not that much on-street parking that occurs. During the mobility study, we looked at parking both during the day and the evenings. During the daytime, parking utilization was about 10% of what's available. At the nighttime, it was about 20% of what's available. So, we hear people saying we need lots of parking, but when you go out there, you don't see the street all parked full either. So, the other thing that was pointed out and recognized in the mobility study also, as properties are redeveloped and new development comes in, those properties are still required to provide their own off-street parking facilities. So, on-street parking would be just for spillover or parking over and above what would be required. So, for those considerations, I don't know that we need to provide parking on both sides of the street. It's not a need that we're seeing when we go out there during the day or in the evenings to look at how it's being used.
Thank you, okay. And before I forget, Ron, if you could email these to the board, is that possible?
Yeah, I can get them to, they're large files, so they may have to be a file-share-download kind of thing.
Yeah, that'd be appreciated. I'm just having a hard time getting the...
Yeah, the presentation and the figures for sure.
That would be great, thank you. And I'm just keeping an eye on the time as well, so let's go back to Patty.
Thank you. So, sorry, I just, about the parking on, the Sunday parking on the one side of the road, I think I am inclined to leave it as staff recommends whereby you take it away, and then do the boxed line parking that is presented in option two, and then see if in fact you really do need, like what Laura's speaking to, the Sunday parking, so people can go hike up the mountain. Because I tend to think that probably with the designated parking pulled out, that people will park there, and then if you find later that the need exists, maybe you can do it, but I would be in favor of taking away the parking, the Sunday parking, for the safety reasons.
Thanks, Patty. And that's, I mean, kind of an overarching concern here, is just, you know, of course, allowing parking that's clearly marked so people know where to go, but really, you know, using this as a safety tool, and making sure we're keeping safe sightlines for these residents that live there. Because I know, like you said, we've had some complaints, so I think in option two, it basically keeps what is understood use at this point. So I think, yeah, I think that does make sense, and with the clear distinctive markings, whatever we end up on, I think the cost difference was kind of negligible, so however, we end up there. I agree with the crosses, I'd rather either have the single lines or the full boxes. I wasn't really in favor of the curb marking, so I guess I'll throw that out there too. I don't know if that'd be necessary at this point, especially given what you're saying about the use at this point of that. Maybe that's something in the future that would be needed, if there's a lot more development and a lot more use of the parking. So, is there any...
I think too, if you go with the full box markings, that makes it really clear where you can and can't park. If you just have the parallel lines, it may be a little confusing, like, can I park in front of this line beyond it? But when you make the box, I think that helps delineate, this is where you're intended to park.
I think you're right, yeah. So I just want to see if there's any more board comment before we go to public comment. Jeremy?
Yeah, one other thing I was thinking of recently in light of, and I, sorry for the overwhelming amount of trash talk, but with trash collection, my understanding was cog staff was working with those residents to get that collected on West Pine Grove Road versus the alleys. I'm just wondering if, just kind of wondering how this, if there are cars parked, how this would affect the collection process.
I had no idea they were doing that. Did staff know that they were doing that, changing our service on us again, with no knowledge? Because it's sort of conflicting with our thoughts of what to do in Pine Grove Mills, because I don't think we want a bunch of garbage trucks stopping on Route 26. Come on.
It was my... Well, it was my understanding, due to some winter weather and trees in some of those tighter alleys, it was almost impossible for those trucks to get down those alleys. So it's just a better access.
Because for the past 20 years, they've been doing it. I wonder if it's the new company whose CEO makes like 12 million dollars a year. I wonder if it's because of that. Just, I just, we can't keep bearing the burden of companies that they're supposed to pick up the trash, but no matter what, they can't do it. They've got all these reasons why they can't do it. Too early, too late, too hot, too cold, too narrow, too wide, too this, too that. Just, you know, get your truck.
Whatever they're doing now, they would have to accommodate around, they would have to work around whatever we put in.
But they're not. Apparently, they're moving forward without staff. Does our staff know that they're doing this? Seriously, I'd like an answer, because communication between that agency and us is four.
I mean, I think if there's a question about trash pickup locations, we can ask that of staff. I don't know if they're prepared to answer that at this time.
Yeah, I just wondered if our municipal staff had been informed by cog staff of this potential change.
Understood, okay.
Yes or no?
Well, I don't think we can answer that right at this minute, nor do we need to, because I think we need to finish this discussion.
Then the answer must be no, I guess.
I'm not even clear on what the question was, so I think we're just going to move on.
My real question though is, God, that's so irritating. My real question is, has anybody asked the church about removing this parking? The churches?
Good question.
You did? Okay, great. So they're fine with it?
Yeah, during the mobility study, the consultant reached out to the two churches there along Pine Grove Road. Neither one of them were aware that the parking was allowed, because again, it's not posted that you are allowed, and one of the pastors said, why would anybody even consider parking there? That's crazy.
Wonderful, thank you.
So, yeah, they're not going to miss it. They have some informal sharing of parking between themselves if there's larger events, and then they kind of default and do overflow parking over at the school parking lot if they have to.
Okay, if there's no other board comment, let's go to Jordan. I see your hand up. If you could give us your full name and township of residence, I think this is Jordan from our Pine Grove Mills Committee.
That is correct, yeah. Jordan Robb. I am on the Small Area Plan Advisory Committee, and I live in Pine Grove Mills. First of all, just thanks to putting together this study. It seems to be very complete, and in general, I would say that I agree with all of the sentiments that Laura has expressed. I do have a couple other observations and maybe questions. And if you, if you did say this, Ron, I apologize if I missed it, but did the study at all look at if the parking was just flipped from one side of Pine Grove Road to the other? Are there like, for instance, less driveways on the south side of the road than there are on the north? And if we moved the yellow line to accommodate that, would that be safer and/or create potentially more parking spaces?
That's a great question, Jordan. I did not talk about that or present it, but we did look at that as we were looking at options. And again, you can see even just in the graphic I have here, there are pretty much as many driveways on the south side of Pine Grove Road as there are on the north side. For the most part, you wouldn't really gain a measurable amount of parking, again, here down closer to Rosemont, driveway, 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 driveway. It just, they keep going and going and going. So we did look at that briefly. We didn't quantify it with doing another tabulation or drawing, because I don't know that it would get us a lot more. So, but good question.
All right. The, I appreciate your comment and observations about the utilization of the parking, and I think that speaks a lot to the nature of, I think what Laura said, a dire need for parking. Now, from what I understand, living there and observing, I think 100% accurate assessment that it is underutilized right now, is that the need for parking is not based on utilization, it's based on the vision that is in the small area plan, and the perceived need for parking for anyone who is a potential resident or someone who wants to open a small commercial business, which we found in the small area plan to be the desire of the majority of the people who participated in the surveys contributing to the small area plan. So the need for parking is really about creating opportunity. And so I do agree with Laura in that maximizing it is our best option, which leads me to the observations about Water Street. And I agree that right now, parking doesn't seem to be safe there. I live on Water Street. I have parked in front of my house before, temporarily, but my thought is that I know that there are improvements to sidewalks that are planned, and I think at one point, maybe I heard whispers that potentially that sidewalk could be, on Water Street, could be extended up to Chestnut, which I think is a very good idea, because people certainly walk that stretch of road. And so my question is, if improvements are made to the sidewalk, couldn't we consider looking at where a curb is located, and how that could better serve parking on Water Street as well? Again, to just help maximize the parking.
Dave, thanks.
Hi, Jordan. This is Dave Modraker.
Hi, Dave.
Hi. So we've not progressed yet with that design, but during the field view and environmental and preliminary engineering assessment, that was discussed. We don't know if there will be curb or no curb, but in either scenario, the likely outcome is no parking from the perspective of the department. So we don't know that for certain, but again, it didn't appear that there would be adequate width for the sidewalk, the tree lawn area, and then curb or no curb. And then typically, you're looking at an eight-foot-wide width for parking, and then the lane going up Water Street, I don't know if it's 10, 11, or 12, but I, my recollection is there probably won't be, but we don't know that for certain, and we'll continue to look at that in, you know, in the final design, with the understanding that folks are interested in parking if it's available.
Okay, yeah, as long, that's fair. As long as, as long as that is, you know, one of the elements that you continue to consider when designing that sidewalk, that's fantastic.
All right, thank you, Jordan. You. Great, thanks for that explanation too, Dave. That's helpful.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, Ron, anything else that you need to hear back from us at this point?
So I guess just a consensus. I don't know if it has to be a motion or not, or a work session, but just, it sounds like from what I'm hearing is the board's in favor of option two, that provides more parking. I heard that we like the box stalls as opposed to any other style of marking. I heard that we don't think curb painting is necessary. So, if that's the consensus, we can move forward in that, if, I mean, if...
I think probably our next step, because they're not making any decisions here, is we'll just bring, bring an option back for your consideration at a regular meeting.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah, probably that, and we'd also have the draft ordinance that you would be able to see as well to authorize for advertisements. So we would go through and actually do all the language to clean the ordinance up.
Great, yeah.
To match what's on the plan.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Just to chip in on the synopsis, I didn't mention, but I'm actually in favor of the curb painting, so since this is a work session, we can't really do a motion, but I'll be advocating for that, because I think it...
but I'll be advocating for that because I think it, it's just another way for people to understand where they cannot park. And I, I don't know if there's a rule, if you just use the red, you have to use the yellow and the blue too. But I would be in favor of like, adjust the red. So it's just like a no, no, no kind of a thing. So we can, I guess, work that out later, but I'm in favor of the curb painting. Thanks.
Markings, you don't have to paint all of them. You, you can paint some and not others, but you have to respect the color. So you can't use red everywhere. You can only use red by a hydrant or a designated fire zone, fire lane. Any other no parking would be yellow. Dedicated parking could be white or no markings. And blue can be used for handicap parking space. So you can pick and choose. Like I said, let's just paint the blue curb for handicap parking and nothing else. Or let's paint the blue handicap parking and the red for the fire hydrant, but nothing else. So, so you can choose what you want to paint or not paint, but you can't choose your color for your condition.
Gotcha.
Okay, that makes sense. And we can look at that at the next round. Yeah, I think that sounds really good.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you so much. Thanks for bringing this to us and presenting it. Again, thanks to Jordan for that input. Okay, we will move on. All right, up next was a board member request and this was discussion of the township's financial health and options for budget management. And I'll go ahead and introduce this one. This discussion just picks up really where we left off last fall in our November budget work sessions. The manager presented a good description of the township's financial situation. We saw that existing deficit between the revenue and expenditure at that time, ballparked around $4 million. And the manager had a really useful slide in that presentation about the options to consider. And those listed out were a step-down approach, reprioritization, and budget caps. The idea being to utilize these options to stabilize the budget to get to something sustainable. So in this discussion, we can talk about these options. It's a good time of the year prior to really diving into CIP and budget creation. And so we can really just discuss a bit if there's preferences or concerns with any of those options and really just looking for direction and support for the manager as she moves into preparing the CIP and budget. Having that will, that kind of support gives her and the staff time to evaluate those options. So I can start by sharing my thoughts. I'll pause quickly to see if there's questions at this point. Seen none. I thought all of the options presented were something worthy of exploring. I didn't think, I wouldn't necessarily rule any of those things out. I thought particularly the reprioritizing and placing caps on the spending seemed things that were maybe the best options for the township at this point. I think reprioritizing the projects can make strategic sense in terms of funding and use of staff time. It could allow the township to focus on maintenance, taking care of what we have, finishing what we've started. The departments could also do something like ranking their requests that would be for new projects, new hires, expansion. So the board would have that specific staff input on that, on those items when we're deliberating, deciding what to cut, what to add. That was a recommendation that came out in one of the recent COG meetings, either in finance or in executive committee, in discussing their budget prioritization, was having some ranked proposals so that, just, you know. One other thing I wanted to mention, I think that the cap on budget growth is also a helpful structure for financial planning. Again, it's something else we've been talking about in the COG realm of budget planning. So another tool we're getting familiar with using over there to bring back here. I think what could be useful to the board too in that area is having the data to show the board what percentage of spending has gone to different departments or different funds over the past few years. So what has grown the most, what's grown the least, what's been the most consistent to get kind of a baseline, to kind of benchmark where we are and create some expectations, some predictability there. So I wanted to get those ideas out there first to give us a place to start. Again, we're not looking for anything specific. We can't take action, we don't need to take action. This is manager's role is creating these documents, the CIP and the, and the budget. But it was a good time of the year to kind of get that discussion going. If there was any input that the board wanted to give back to the manager at this time. And really just, as I said, kind of giving that support of, you know, what, moving forward with what she feels is necessary to stabilize and create some good planning frameworks for us. So if there's any comments on any of that, if you have a different idea of what would be a better tool for the manager to pursue, if you think those are all good ideas or don't like any of them. Looking for any feedback on, on that. Patty?
Sure, I'll go ahead and, and I agree with everything you just said. Using all of the tools necessary to, to achieve the goals. And I also am, just the comment is that I also am sort of excited that, when you were talking about the data and stuff, that maybe now with the implementation of TRAZER, that we will be able to have some real data that will help us with that and make that a lot easier.
That's a great comment. Thank you for mentioning that. Anything else, Jeremy, thoughts on that?
Yeah, I don't know what all you, all staff has in terms of analytics, but I think a lot, you know, as we, as software and new programs come online, we're, we're able to start collecting data that we may not have had or may not have been able to easily access to help us guide in our decisions moving forward.
Thanks. If there's nothing else... Oh, go ahead, Laura.
Thanks. Thanks so much for bringing this discussion to us. I really appreciated when the manager last year gave us those kind of strategies. And I actually can't even believe I thought of another one because she was so thorough, but I did. And that is to benchmark against the rest of the region. And I'll give an example of that, what I mean by that. So when we, the board, whoever was on the board when we worked on the stormwater fee, we came under artillery, heavy artillery fire, I'll call it, from our residents saying how much we wasted money and how we should fire all our staff and we pay them too much. Wow, residents wrong. So I had to go to the data. And so I and Steve Miller, we had an effort to acquire the data just as an elected official, which is of course not going to be a professionally done thing. So I'm asking for a professionally done thing. I'm asking for staff to do the same thing because I think it would be helpful for our residents and our board members to understand how lean we really are here in Ferguson Township. So here's the numbers I came up with, okay? Again, possibly inaccurate, but State College Borough spends about, let me see here where I have the per capita covered up. Okay, here it is. If you include residents only, they spend about $2,767 per resident per year. If you don't include the students, they spend, I'm sorry, if you, residents only, it's $2767. If you include students, so to drop it, it's $1,122. Patent Township spends about $950 per person per year. College Township spends about $863 per person per year. Harris Township spends about $467 per person per year. And Ferguson Township, before our stormwater fee, spent about $588 per person per year. So in that, I didn't include, but one, two, three, four, five. So that's five municipalities and we were fourth in spending, right? So what does that tell me? That tells me that what we, another strategy is raising taxes. Okay, if we have a deficit, instead of cutting, what are we going to do? We're going to raise taxes. We raised the stormwater fee. That put us at $681 of spending per person, per, uh, per year. And then we're still, two, three, oh, we're still fourth. Look at that, we're still fourth. So even with stormwater fee, we are the second lowest, not including half moon, in the center region of spending our residents. So I guess what that tells me is that the deficit is because we don't have enough income, not because we're not cutting enough. So that's just my take home for that. So I'd like those benchmarks to be done professionally so we can really understand where we're at. And I'll add that when we met with the Senator, Resident, Manager Erickson of Patent Township, he wanted to know if the Senator could do anything to remove the non-home rule charter municipality constraints on taxation. So they're looking to actually increase their spending from $950 per person per year. So, you know, they just can't because of the, like, you know, state, I guess. They could raise their income tax, but then, then we wouldn't come under fire for having the highest income tax. So my method is I'd like to have added increasing taxes and benchmarking with other municipalities as two potential options. Thanks.
Thanks, and I think when the present, when the slide was presented at the, at the budget meetings, it was alternatives to raising taxes were those options given. So that's obviously one, you know, primary option.
Right, but I don't know if it's on the list, so could we get it on the list?
Right, these were the alternatives, yeah. So that would be one thing. That's just why it wasn't listed on that slide, but certainly it's, it's in there. But benchmarking, I think, is something else that makes sense. Okay. Any other comments on this item? And if not, we'll move on. Next item up is review of the Center Region Council of Government Budget Guideline, Timeline, and Budget Priorities. This has Ms. Martin, but I'm not sure if it's presented by Ms. Dinnehy, so I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Chair Strickland. I, I recall having some, some correspondence following the February Finance Committee's meeting and understanding that there was some discussion among the members that attended about the priorities, the guideline, and timeline, I believe, that had been proposed by their finance director and discussed briefly with the, the committee members and, and looking for the municipalities to take it back to their, their board members and, and having, and being, to be prepared for the discussion in March. I believe Supervisor Dinnehy attended that meeting and, and may have more to contribute as far as what exactly, you know, was discussed and what they're looking for. And even more appropriately to, to better position Supervisor Dinnehy to, to contribute to that dialogue at the March COG Finance Committee meeting to represent the board's position on the proposed guideline, timeline, and budget priorities for COG.
I'd be happy to lead if you would like, but I, I'll need a screen share for the documents.
To see the priorities?
Yep, we can start with that. Whatever you prefer, I don't care at all. There's three things. The priorities, the timeline, and the, I think the guidelines, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I had emailed them all to the board, like, the first time they were in the agenda. It just had the finance agenda without the attachments, so we didn't have them, so we couldn't talk about it then. And then after that meeting, I emailed them to the board. But I think for the purpose of this discussion, is she not here? So later we'll be able to?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So for the purpose of this discussion, I don't know, I didn't, I didn't see the document.
February 21st PDF attachment.
We're bringing that up.
Thank you.
Give this a second, sure.
I don't know, it'd probably be easiest to start with the shortest document, which is just the, the vision statement-y kind of budget priorities.
Yeah, we can, did you want to just?
You know, like, like pay the staff so they don't leave, these kinds of things, like check, all of those things. My comment on that, I'll just fill the time while we're just standing here like, looking at each other. My comment on that was that it seemed like a touchy-feely vision statement and really did not give staff any real guidelines to go by. You know, it, it, it set up a false dichotomy between projects and staffing. It's not, it's not a either or, it's a both and. You can't do a project without the staff, right? So whenever we get that up, we can...
Yeah, I'll comment on that. I thought that was, it made looking at those priorities difficult because it was combining two different, two different ideas that we had to think about. So we have, you know, the, the fixed costs that are in there and staff. And of course, you know, that's in the, you know, that would be in a, in a vision statement, like you said, you know, taking care of, of staff. But then there's, I thought that the priorities really were to rank expansion or, you know, cap, things in the capital improvement plan. So having something like that in there, I don't know, I thought it confused it. My thought really with those priorities was to reword them, reorient, reorder them. I thought they should, they were just so general.
So general?
Yeah.
Like, yes, do all those things. There's not a prioritization. It's a statement of all the things that you want to do that can't compete with each other. So how I would prioritize, it, it's frustrating because remember that meeting in which we aborted the definition of take care of what we have into anything we want it to be? And it meant buy new things and start new programs too? So like, I'm not comfortable with sending them this language of take care of what we have because they don't, that's, that's, that is also too specific because that can literally mean anything anybody wants at any time, right? Like, anything having to do part, with parks, a new program, a new facility, a new this, that's still take care of what we have because we have a parks program. So that was really a, like, just a, when that happened at the COG General Forum with that concession truck, it just took away all meaning to this conversation, really. It's just like, oh, okay, that's gaslighting right there and that's not actually taking care of what we have. So now if we send that language back to them, it's not, it's going to be redefined in that manner. So I'm not comfortable with that. Yeah, taking care of what we owned, own, safe, well-made. So according to College Township, that means also anything we feel like buying in the future falls under that, right? Do we all remember that? Everybody was there, yeah. And then that whole pass, we all agreed, voted against it. And then it went forward because it's taking care of what we own. No, no. So, okay, what do you guys think of these?
So I think if we just take that one, for example, taking care of what we own, I would call that facility maintenance or something, just to get that ball rolling. Something like that is what I would call that. And that could be roof repair, you know, whatever that is. But that is how I see what their intent was with that. But I agree, the taking care of...
Well, what makes our intent is.
And that, that's what we can put on here. That's how I read that. That's what I think should be the intent of that. So that would be my suggestion.
So how could we reword it that it actually means that to other people and it can't be manipulated? Maintaining our currently owned assets.
Mm-hmm, yeah, existing...
And not even owned because Millbrook isn't owned.
Right.
And I'm also not interested in flaking out on, oh, that's okay. You know, no, I actually, I don't know that I even want Millbrook under there. You know, I, how about holding accountable other owners of other properties to... to not have the taxpayers funding all their improvements? You know, that's, that's my priority. Accountability to where you're spending the dollars. Lisa, I liked what you said about our departments, like, what are they spending? Um, budget priorities, stop spending down the fund balance on stuff and then telling us we need to give them more money, right? It, not, preparing for the future of COG facilities. Like, I would like to strike all of these because they're all meaningless or they all are the same thing.
And again, I think, I think I understand what the idea was here, was that when they get, um, and there was another document in the packet, uh, that was the, um, request for new staff or new equipment, unfunded request form. So I, I, my understanding is that when this unfunded request form will come in from a department, that that would be looked at against this list of priorities. So I, I understand why they kept a general, so just explaining why we even have this in front of us. So I, but I think we can make it more useful than what it is. But that was my understanding of why we even have this, was so that their finance department, I guess finance committee then, would use this list of priorities to, uh, to yea or nay if something has to be added or something, or cut, or if something can be added, so, um...
Right, I agree with you, Lisa. The thing is that no matter what thing you come up with, it will fall under one of these. So it's not a prioritization.
No, and that's why I'm saying, let's make it specific and let's reorder how we think it should be.
I think that the, I think the executive director could take another stab and be a bit more precise, um, and then send it back to us because nobody's gonna hear what we say anyway, and they're all gonna pass this, and this is gonna be a big waste of our time. So, you know, here's a budget priority I could get behind, is that only the agency, only the municipalities that participate in a program should vote on it during budget time. I don't need Harris Township voting on fire when they're not spending any money for it. I don't need Half Moon voting on fire or parks when they're not spending any money on it. There's no reason why they should be. We should have our forum and our vote defined by who participates and funds the budget, okay? So my budget priority is revamp the process to be fair and equitable, okay? I don't really care what Harris Township thinks about what we want to do in terms of fire because they don't spend any money on it. And I know there's somebody that wants to be so collegial and so helpful, but it's not helpful to our taxpayers. It's unfair to our taxpayers, and somebody's got to stop it. So my budget priority is make it fair. That's the one thing. Make it fair to the municipalities. Stop this absurd definition of what is or isn't, uh, what is that? Cooperative. It's cooperative for Ferguson to not always get the short end of the stick, okay? So that's my budget priority. So make it fair, just make it fair, right? And then I'm willing to spend the money, right? Of course I am, of course I am. So all of these are great budget priorities, but none of them are gonna help anybody determine what our budget priorities in terms of what we fund are. So Lisa, if you, if you guys think that you can do something with this list, that's great. I just, I don't.
I'll look to Jeremy and Patty for comment, and then I can start to summarize a bit. Because we still have the guideline and the timeline to get to, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just looking over the, uh, budget priorities to reference the taking care of what we own. You know, uh, I was thinking, possible rephrase of taking care of existing facilities or even rewording it, invest in our existing facilities. Um, the unfunded request form, one thing that I see absent, that would be a good question that I would like to see incorporated in the unfunded request form when it's being reviewed. How is the unfunded request impacting our residents? Where, where, wanna see that whole cycle link of where the residents would play into the unfunded request.
Okay, so maybe a suggestion under the detailed description justification, um, a separate line, uh, need and, uh, expected benefit, something like that, okay?
Yep.
And I'll go to-
Lisa, you'll be at-
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
You'll be at this meeting.
Yeah.
And I'm just, I'm really concerned if this goes forward with us wordsmithing a few words and then we just cart this over to them like we endorse it. Because it's going, it, our executive director needs more direction than this, and we're not providing it for him, and that is our job. He gave us this, it is, it is going to move forward and it is going to not help him. And we are going to have another nightmare like we did last year. Um, what happened with all the manager's suggestions of priorities? What, you know, don't, how about this as a budget? Don't have us spend 87% of our capital investment on parks. That's tone deaf, you know? Listen to the managers with their public safety needs. We say public safety all the time, and yet what's happening? The park director hires being, um, prioritized over the fire director hiring. Not heard, nobody's hearing. And, uh, the budget priorities, the last one is safety, code fire EMS transportation facilities. Like, really, that's kind of the only one. That and, and taking care of what we own in the true sense of the manner, those are really the only two real priorities that I can possibly extract out of this. And if we send this, Lisa, with you, with all of these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight mushy vague things, that's what's gonna go through. So if we're going to try to work with what they have given us as opposed to sending it back and say, try again, then I think that we should be removing all of the other things so it becomes extraordinarily clear that there are two priorities. Public safety and taking care of what we own, have, existing. Because the rest of that is like, of course, and it's not a priority. Efficient interconnected shared services delivery ecosystem? Can anybody even give me a tutorial on what that means?
And definitely, that's what I have on, in my list, that was what I have. And so when I go back to that meeting, that's what I'm gonna be taking back, that I, I think the list needs to reflect what was stated at the budget meetings last fall. The priority was public safety. That was the priority to rank everything else against. That's where the funding needs to go. After that-
Thank you.
Yeah, maintaining these things we already own, keeping them usable.
Because you'll say that, and then it'll be like, oh, so what you mean is you want us to hire the parks director first and then the fire director? That's what you mean by prioritizing public safety, right? Or, oh, you want us to make a capital investment program with 87% parks and 13% fire? Is that what you mean by prioritizing public safety? You know, it's like, what is the metric by which they can understand that priority? It means not, like, so another priority, balance out the CIP. Balance it. Give somebody else some love other than the park authority, and they're, oh, we need a field, we need a field, you know? How about, we need, we need fire coverage, we need working hydrants, we need a fire station, we need to figure out what we're doing with the fire stations of Patton Township, College Township in the borough, because Ferguson Township has the slowest response. They own those assets, those municipalities, and we are investing our taxpayer dollars into those assets. Now, I asked in facilities, hey, when are we gonna talk about ownership being taken over by the COG? So those are our shared assets that we're investing in. I gotta, oh, thank you for your suggestion for an agenda item. So that's going into the dead file to be buried in the cemetery.
So let's go to guideline then, let's talk about the guideline. And, you know, they're asking for just a number, but we can offer more than that. I'd start by saying the guideline needs to be called the cap because having it as a guideline, we're also talking about a calendar guideline. So I think, I think we need to just call it what it is. So the budget cap, or, you know-
Great.
Contribution increase guideline or something else. But we, calling it just the guideline is not useful, it's confusing. So that would be my, uh, initial comment, just off the bat on that.
I agree, Lisa, and I want to add something to that, okay? So what the problem is with how things are rolling out with facilities and how our reinvestment rolls into the guideline, which theoretically is a great idea because you want to maintain, you're gonna get a reinvestment percentage, you're gonna... But the way that it's being utilized is sort of, um, not in a thoughtful manner. So example, like, you know you need to make that reinvestment, but you actually don't need to buy anything. But damn be straight, we're gonna invest 8% into those pools. And even if they don't need a pump, what we're gonna do is then we're gonna take that money and invest it in something else. We shouldn't be doing that, we should put it in a sinking fund. If we're gonna have a reinvestment strategy for capital investment, it should not go into things that we don't need at the time. So that guideline encompasses that reinvestment percentage of the pools, which I think is 8%, they decided. But there's no underlying strategy to prioritize what then will be invested in for that reinvestment strategy. So then you have pool staff saying things like, we need a concessions truck, as opposed to, let's put that money into a sinking fund for when we need the builders. So cap, yes, absolutely. But the idea that then the reinvestment percentage has to be spent in that year is a faulty assumption. That reinvestment percentage should be utilized for the capital improvements that are needed that come not annually, but like, oh, gosh, you know, we, oh, the thing, it's gonna need to be replaced in two years, next year, now we have the money, there it is. So that's the kind of thing that will work in companion with the guideline, that we're not then spending that reinvestment money on things that we don't need to be reinvesting in. So the facilities committee hasn't gotten very far yet in their determination of reinvestment dollars. And unfortunately, guess what we did? Not me. We prioritize the parks facilities, not the fire facility, as far as I understand. I don't know, maybe Patty, you were there last year? Because here's what I'm seeing, is that we're very worried about reinvesting in the parks, and we're prioritizing all of our assessment of them, maybe even Millbrook Marsh, which we don't even own, we can't get Penn Stadium into the table, we're prioritizing that. But where are we seeing about the fire and station reinvestment strategy? Where's that? Okay, that's where we don't have proper service out here. That's where other people are politically avoiding that conversation because they know that based on the current system, what should really be happening is that COG, just like we did with the building, should take on all of those fire stations, and then they should build the Ferguson Fire Station. And then all of the fire stations should be owned by COG and invested in by COG, period, simple.
So do you want to make a suggestion on the cap as divided?
So guideline plus a more refined policy on the reinvestment strategy, plus prioritizing the fire reinvestment strategy and the facility strategy of what we're gonna do with fire facilities.
The way, at the last presentation, I saw it also was, uh, it looked like, and you probably saw this, Laura, at finance, maybe, I'm not sure where this was presented, the estimated increase. So if you're looking at, um, the possible cap, I guess it's not in here, the possible cap, it was, uh, it came out to 7.2%. And we know last year it turned out to be about an 8% increase, somewhere around there. Um, and historically, when there had been a cap, it was at about 8%. So the 7.2% looked like it included, uh, just inflation. So it was really just fixed expenses at the inflated rates of today, plus maybe merit and coal, I'm not sure what else that included. But it was not capital, uh, capital investment. So what I hear you saying is looking at that separately, which is what I thought of too. So having those fixed, having a separate cap or guide, whatever we call it, separate cap for the fixed expenses and a segment of a cap for capital expenses, new hires, new expansion, um, capital improvements.
Well, yes, but under that capital investment, there should be a designation of difference between reinvestment for maintenance and new purchases. And in fact, if you want me to whip out part of the guideline, I'd say, do not plan to make any new parks purchases right now. Just hold it steady right now so we can figure out who needs to raise taxes to be able to pay for the third largest park system in the state. So yes, the capital investment being part of the guideline, but not including new stuff, just the reinvestment stuff. That's not a, well, I don't want a guideline for them to tell how much they can increase our, our, um, cost without some serious deliberation. I don't want that coming from the park authority and then whipping right into that budget that's being presented.
Okay.
It's just so frustrating. It's just so frustrating that at this, is there 50 years old and that this is where we are?
Okay, I'm making notes. So I think we have that. So timeline is the last item on there.
Yeah.
I mean-
It's that major, that very big spreadsheet document with all the colors, that's it. So Lisa, you and I discussed this a little bit, um, like, this budget process is good, but really, really the whole problem is that they're not getting the job done in time for us in the municipalities, um, to get that budget of COG through and for us to have a chance to deliberate on it in a reasonable manner and then get the information. So the managers who I want to hear from here, because I'm not seeing that this is gonna work for us still. And Lisa, when you and I talked about this, what we said, like, this is great in terms of just knowing what's coming when, but what we need is just a simple, like, hey, this is what we'll give you, don't exceed it, and that's what we're gonna put in our budget. Uh, like, a model that's driven by us, saying what we can afford. Because if they can't get the job done in time, I don't, I really am not comfortable with us just allowing that very sloppy, sloppy process to occur that did last year. Um, so how can, if they can't deal with it, then how can we? The only way we can is saying, here's your limit, this is what we'll put in our budget, period. So that would be then back to that guideline, right? As apportioned by each of the agencies, how it shows up in our budget. So my comment on the budget process is basically, thank you for doing this so we know what's going on, but I do not think that this works for our municipal timeline. And I wanted to defer to the manager and see if, if her review of this shows that this is gonna work for the municipal timeline. I'm just not seeing it. I'm not seeing it. And that's what I said in the last finance meeting. And Lisa, that's when you and I then discussed, well, does this really matter in that sense if we have a hard number that we're working with? It doesn't. Because all of this effort is made so we can coordinate that one number for us to put in our budget.
Right, and yeah, exactly. So having that firm number, whether it's 8%, whatever it is, we can base our CIP budget planning on that known set increase. So we'll, we'll go to the manager now for, for thought, if you have anything to share on that.
Thank you. So the, uh, the tentative, or now I would say the final schedule for the township for the capital improvement plan begins, uh, sitting with the department directors, the manager, the finance director, between May 30th and- director, between May 30th and June 5th. So between that time period is when department directors will have their recommendation for capital project requests to be in the CIP. By June 5th, we're looking to take those requests, the manager and the department, or, excuse me, the finance director will begin preparing the CIP for the special meetings that are scheduled the last week in June. And so if you look at the COG Finance Committee schedule, I believe they have their first draft being presented to the Finance Committee on June 8th. And what was discussed between myself, Eric, and Joe Vigilone at the February Managers' Breakfast, was acknowledgement that the dates are not lining up. And Joe Vigilone, the Finance Director, I believe he's still in that role, had, had expressed gratitude and appreciation for having this be presented, because it allows for everyone to be on the same page. And while it's difficult, of course, for COG to be able to line up their schedule with every, you know, region participating municipality, it's helpful for them to understand how we can work together. I understand that there might be some pain points in terms of getting, you know, adjusting to this type of a schedule, but if that draft is presented to the Finance Committee in June 8th, and then the discussion that comes out, you know, the outcomes that come from that discussion, we just need to be immediately communicated back to Ferguson Township. So then, again, from June 5th to June 24th, well, let's just allow time for advertising. So let's say June 5th to, give or take a few days, to June 20th, that's the time the manager and the finance director will begin preparing Ferguson Township's, what I'll call the, the first final draft for review by the board. So that gives some time. It certainly is kind of running up against the timeline, but it gives us something to work with for this first year. I think where we are as a municipality is good, having a schedule that, that allows for our staff to kind of, you know, adhere to that, and we're not rushing up against the clock. Our Home Rule Charter requires that the CIP is adopted three months prior to the operating budget. So that's our absolute, you know, constraint. Whereas we saw last, you know, last year, we were kind of, you know, we generally have adopted in August, and we're right up against that three-month threshold that we have prior to needing to adopt the final budget. So the schedule that we've prepared, and the board, I want to say we, excuse me, the staff's prepared and the board has approved, it allows for a little bit flexibility. If we need to fall into that timeframe to adjust, we can. But I, I think that this is doable. I think the first year, certainly, we might find that, you know, there might be some minor pain points, but ultimately, I think we, we stay aligned with this schedule, and we ensure that COG communicates with us after that June 8th Finance COG Committee. We get their preliminary numbers, and that's the number we work with. And then, of course, as you continue this discussion in March, if the, if the COG Finance Committee does determine that they want to prioritize a cap, or what do we call that, a guideline, as an alternative phrase, but if they, if there is a guideline, a targeted guideline, that number then allows, you know, us to be able to precisely identify what that percentage cap is, for lack of better words, and we can calculate that on our end if needed. Is that helpful?
Thank you. Thank you, Centuries. You brought, you jogged my memory of one of the nightmares of last year by focusing on that time period between 6/8, and you said 6/20, I'm not sure, but, like, so I just want to focus on that for a minute, and I'd like our board to suggest a change, or just removing it all, because I remember now what happened. It finally came to light that, yes, all my feelings of the past seven years were validated, six years were validated, because indeed, there is no timeframe for us to make changes to the program plan. So it's funny, because you'll see draft program plan to Finance Committee, 6/8, and then 6/21, program plan finalized for distribution to General Forum. There is no time that that draft plan goes from draft to final with any elected input. So stop using the word draft. It's not a draft, it's your final. There is no time for us to make changes. None. You see, draft program to Finance, program plan to distribute, distribute to General Forum, municipalities review the program plan, staff finalize responses to program plan, that is July 31st. Finance Director distributes budget allocations, updated personnel pages and budget booklets the same day. So the program plan is still working its way through in a non-finalized way, even though we all know it's final. There's no time for us to vote on a change. So when that thing is referred to the municipalities, it's get out the rubber stamp, because there is no time after that, after referred to municipalities by the General Forum, where do you see, after municipalities review the program plan and staff finalize responses, does anyone see a time where the electeds respond to the responses and make changes? I don't. I think we need to add that in there. Because what happens every year is staff just like, oh yeah, we wanted that because of this, and then there's no time to change it if you disagree with that. And that is exactly how we got in the horrific situation we were in last year, because we did indeed want to make changes, but there was no time. So could we ask as a board, even though we're in work session and can't do it by motion, could we ask as a board for them to insert an opportunity for, after both the CIP and the program plan, after staff finalize responses, it's the last line in each of those chunks, let's ask if we can add another line that says, COG considers staff responses and municipal responses to make potential changes? Because that's what we actually need in there. And that may make the timeline bigger, but if we have a cap, it won't matter. And then we can actually have some deliberation about priorities there. Whereas now, in the process, there is none. So my suggestion is, in the yellow chunk and in the blue chunk, add one more item. After staff finalize responses, then add another item, COG committees review responses and municipal responses. Because in the Finance Committee, we don't get a chance to do that, and that is inappropriate. Because we've just sent it out to all the municipalities, and then basically, we take all the information that staff works, went hours of talking about it, and we throw it in the trash. Right in the trash. We don't talk about it, we don't think about it, we don't review it, because it's not in this list. Do we put it on the list?
Yeah, I think we can add that, because it was just soliciting comments on the timeline. So we'll ask to add a line for deliberation by Finance Committee on Municipal Comments.
Yep. And it would be after the last yellow note and after the last blue note.
Yep.
Oh, and guess what? There's another note down there. Could you scroll down a little bit? Or not? I think it's, I think it's covered by the, up the other way, yeah. Okay. Where is, okay, the detailed budget, just in the purple, detailed budget distributed to Finance Committee, Finance Committee reviews detailed budget, draft summary budgets after Finance Committee finalizes the budget. So between 25 September and October 13th, you've got Finance Committee reviews the detailed budget, and then Finance Committee finalizes the budget, but there's no input in between there. So it's all in the hands of the Finance Committee. So then it goes to the municipalities, the municipalities review it, the Finance Committee reviews the municipal comments November 16th. Okay, there's another problem right there. Okay, so after the Finance Committee reviews the municipal comments on the summary budget, November 27th, the General Forum approves it. So what if there's changes? When are we going to incorporate changes? So then after General Forum, no, after Finance Committee reviews municipal comments on summary budget, where is the opportunity for General Forum to discuss it before they approve it and make changes? So that, I think, was the other problem, is what they are targeting is the General Forum November meeting, what they need to target is the October meeting, I think. Or maybe they target the November meeting, but the timeline is moved out, because the other problem is, once it's in the budget, it's just going through. There's no opportunity for changes worked into this timeline, so therefore, they never have it. I mean, we spend nine hours, or six to nine hours, making changes to our budget, and then add it top off another meeting, and there's zero time here, really, for the General Forum to make any changes. So I guess a comment on this would be, where is the opportunity to make changes to the budget after municipalities have provided their comments? And I don't want to ask them to add it anywhere, I would like to hear an answer from them. Because last year, and the Finance Committee was like, well, there isn't. You know, we're receiving these, noted. So can we ask that question? Where is the opportunity to make changes to the detailed budget after the municipal review? The municipal review is October 24th. So Centuries, if we review the COG budget October 24th, and it's not final yet, so here was the crux of the problem. Thanks for letting me take time to work it out. We've already moved our budget through, we can't make, like, there's a thing that happens where we cannot make changes to the COG budget, because it's gone too long and we passed our budget. It would then take a budget amendment to reduce our COG now. Right? That's what happened last time. So I'm trying to work it out, so we don't do it again. Because that was the real abortion of process, is that we actually, because of the timeline, pigeonholed ourselves into being unable to make changes in a certain form. So what has to happen is the COG budget has to be done before ours goes to public hearing. That's what has to be happening. And it's so far. The COG budget is approved 11/27, Centuries, 11/27. And I know our budget, there's a timeline with our Home Rule Charter, right? That's where the problem is. Also, even though COG staff was thankful for us sending that, it got a lot of grumbles from other Finance Committee members, the fact that we dared to let them know what our needs were for this. It was really disappointing. So, anyway. Lisa, can you help them work that out there? Because nobody's hearing my voice, probably because I'm so frustrated at this point that I have little patience for it. But yeah, we don't want that to happen again.
So I'll say, too, just in response to the email we sent with the dates Ferguson Township's CIP and budget process, then it was, I think, communicated that it'd be helpful if all the municipalities shared that back to COG. So, you know, it wasn't maybe, you know, ideal timing for COG Finance, but I think, you know, it is what it is. You have to try to coordinate these things. So I understand what you're saying. So I will, I'll bring this comment back to Finance Committee. Yeah, I'm trying to study the dates here. I, I understand the complication there, and just trying to really, you know, if it could be referred back to the municipalities sooner, maybe, you know, at an earlier meeting.
Yes.
You know, that's part of the problem, is, is, you know, I know you have to refer things back at General Forum, so that's where we're getting, you know, maybe if it could be referred back without it being in hand at that time, so that once Finance sees it, then it can just automatically be referred without having to go to General Forum. So, because that really just eats up weeks in that process, that-
It does, it does. And I also don't understand this obsession with the program plan that is so thick with language and so thin on information, and look at all the time it takes up. Why is that all happening divorced from the budget? Why is that not happening consecutively with the budget? Or like, don't bother with the program plan, and the four pieces of actual information that are contained in that, put it in the budget of the CIP? Like, there's this weird, false assumption that we need three documents instead of two. Why? And Harris Township was the only one that was, if I recall correctly, and I may not, singing the praises of the program plan, and, you know, it's the same rep that wasn't even sure what all the COG committees are. So he's been on for like, I don't know, 15 years, and he doesn't even know, like, his COG committees, but he loves the program plan. So like, every other person I've ever heard from is like, why do we even have that? It's so full of words and hard to find the information. So the question is, like, is that really so necessary, and can we integrate the data included in that into the CIP and budget, and thereby reducing staff work, reducing the timeline, reducing the demands on staff, increasing the breathing room, and then being able to get the budget done earlier appropriately? It just seems so easy to do that.
So do you, I want to look to the manager.
It's just another strategy.
Do you have any other comments on that timing?
I would say that I think the township's fine to proceed with the adopted schedule that we have for the CIP and the operating budget. Staff can take the numbers that are approved from the Finance Committee and put that into our pre-final budget that the board reviews when they authorize for a public hearing. Again, the schedule's been set up, you know, set up to allow for a little bit of what I'll refer to as wiggle room. It'd be ideal if we can stick to that schedule, and again, that the CIP could be adopted the last meeting in July. But of course, if it's not, because if there's a tremendous, or, you know, a significant change that needs to come as a result of COG's, COG budget changes, we could do that. And it would be a relatively low lift, you know,
Yes.
the right terminology. And same in operating budget. We're tentatively scheduled to have the board review for approval and authorization of a public hearing at the first meeting in November. So again, we generally would approve, in the last couple of years, the boards approved and adopted the budget at the last meeting in December. So we could ideally, of course, based on the schedule that's been approved for 2023, we would approve and adopt our budget at the end of November, the last meeting in November. But if we need to push that into December, we certainly could, as a result of COG needing the estimated numbers that were presented to us in development of the CIP or the operating budget. So again, I think that best-case scenario, as long as Ferguson Township's operating on our approved schedule, it just positions staff and our, you know, our, our schedules to be able to have a little bit of time right before the holiday, for example, in, in November, December. But if our Finance Director and the manager need to revisit and make that amendment as a result of COG budget schedule, we could do that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anything else on this?
Sorry, one more thing. I said so many words, but I should have led with this. The State College Borough is recommending the same thing that I just said, except for not removing the program plan, but the timing. Apparently, the Borough is recommending that the COG budget calendar be moved up one full quarter. And that's sort of what I was kind of getting at here with too many words. I was using too many words. The Borough did it shortly, in fewer words, and I think we should pile on to that, that this calendar be moved up a full quarter. That would meet our needs, right there. That would do it.
Thank you.
That would do it.
Okay.
Simple, done.
Got it, okay. Anything else on this item? I'm just writing this down. Okay, if there's nothing else on that item, we have a number of calendar items on the agenda, and if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, and we're adjourned. Thanks.
Bye. Bye.